And I pledge, if you would like to join me, you certainly may. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have to serve the citizens of Saginaw. Be with us tonight as we deliberate the many issues that we have before us. Also be with all our citizens, be with our public safety officers and all our city workers, and to keep them safe. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Mellon. Councilmember Tibbs. Councilmember Bench is excused. Mayor Pro Tem Clock.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Bryant.
President.
Councilmember Balls.
President.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have eight members present and one excused.
All right. I'd like to remind the audience tonight to remain quiet, refrain from speaking too much out there. Also, this is an excellent time for you to check your electronic devices you have, make sure that you have your phones turned down or turned off so they don't interfere during the meeting. We would appreciate that. And, Madam Clerk, any announcement?
Yes, I have a couple this evening. I want to remind the citizens that collection for leaves and yard waste must be placed in paper yard waste bags or in 33 gallon or smaller containers. They must be labeled yard waste that do not weigh more than 50 pounds. Yard waste is collected on your regular trash day through November 30th. Also, City Hall will be closed Monday, next Monday, May 29th, for the Memorial Day holiday. And in due to that Monday holiday, your trash collection services will be delayed by one day. So residents can set out their materials one day later than they normally would during that holiday week. And Mayor, we have proclamations this evening. Our first one is designating May 2017 as Mental Health Month.
And I believe Tammy Johnson is joining us tonight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Would you come up to the podium, please? And I'll read the proclamation, and then after I'm done, I'll ask you to come forward, receive it, and shake hands with council members. And then when we're done, you can go back and say a few comments for us if you'd like. It's a proclamation, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being. And whereas mental illness will strike one in five adults and children in a given year regardless of age, gender, race, authenticity, religion, or economic status. And whereas people who have mental illness can recover and lead full productive lives. And whereas an estimated two-thirds of adults and young people who have mental health disorders are not receiving the help they need. And whereas the cost of untreated and mistreated mental illness and addictive disorders to American businesses, government, and families has grown to 113 billion annually. And whereas community-based services that respond to individual and family needs are cost-effective and beneficial to consumers and the community. And whereas the National Mental Health Association and its national partners observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health and illness. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmembers, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Mental Health Month in the City of Saginaw. And I urge all citizens and government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in our community to commit to increasing awareness and the understanding of mental health, diagnosis and treatment, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. In witness thereof, I have hereunto and set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 22nd day of May in the year of our Lord 2017. Signed, Dennis D. Browning. As the mayor. Councilmembers Floyd Clock as Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs. Our city manager, Mr. Timothy Morales. Will come forward and accept this, please.
Okay. On behalf of Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority, I thank you. I did bring a couple of consumers here that wanted to say a little something. So, thanks again.
Pardon?
Yeah.
My name is Richard Henry Zimmer, and I'd like to speak on August 22nd of 1992. I was in a very bad car accident that had flipped over 13 times, and there was four of us total in the car. The driver was thrown out the sunroof and was, had died, and they had helicoptered away. And the three of us, others that were in the car, were sent to the hospital, and myself. They overscanned my brain, and, um, then, so, and then of 1994, I had my own home, my own company. I was going to Saginaw Valley, here in Saginaw, for Christ's criminal justice. And, um, then I, uh, my parents got a phone call, and they said, my mother said it sounded like a drunk man calling them. And I ended up having, um, some ambulances come, and they picked me up, and they sent me over to St. Mary's because I was having 13 grandma seizures a day at the minimum. There was more. And then they put me in, induced me into a coma to try stopping the seizures. After that, I was sent over to Seattle, Washington to have my brain injury, surgery. And, uh, the, uh, they took out my front lobe, which is my memory lobe, and they took out my right lobe. And so now I'm living on my left lobe. And after that, I was, uh, ended a lot of depression because of what had happened and what I had lost in my life for both my business and what I have spoken with you just now as far as going through college. And I ended up finding out I had a baby, and there was my ex-fiancee sitting on my lap. She was, she was x-rayed, and we found out I had a baby coming. And it was all I wanted to do is have my baby live the best that she could, and I'd take, and I just wanted to be, take out the bad pressure and things on my life because I just wanted to have her good. Then I was contracted to CMH about physical and the rights, Melinda Schaefer and case managers, to help me out with my life. It took a lot of years. It's been over 25 years to get this far. And my father put this cross on me at the light house after I was put in the Carol's Hospital where they put me in, uh, um, um, a pill medication that, uh, went opposite on me, a fact what I was supposed to do, was supposed to stop the anger. And that was held on. And the hold on did not work. It made me do one bad thing in my life that, and now I would never ever think about doing. But I am doing the best I've ever done ever since I've, before my, um, accident. I go to my mother's once a weekend a month, which at the light house for 14 years wouldn't let me go to my parents, and wouldn't let me do anything with them alone. And now I have little seizures, and they're only a minute or less, and I usually have about four seizures to six seizures a month. And so on that part, um, I am just glad I have a community job. I do with no staff. I have a boss. And with my case manager here, Robin, she's contacted with them to see if I can get more hours in another day, which I'd like to do. And I've never done this good in my life, you know. It's very hard in a long time to get this far. But my father did put this cross on me to stop, you know, make sure I wouldn't put no physical aggression towards anybody and property destruction. And that I haven't done in several years and won't think about doing because when anger comes to me, I would just walk away or put on a pill called Ativan if I needed it. Thank you all.
My name is Jesse Saldana. I'd like to let you know that the Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority is very helpful in serving the needs of our community. While being a consumer of Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority, I have been able to participate in activities on committees and my personalized center planning. There are social workers that are caseworkers, psychiatrists, therapists, peer support specialists, and plenty of support staff at Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority. I have used SCC MHA to help better my life. They have helped me with advice, data for my health, welfare, and well-being. Problem-solving needs such as which psychiatric medications and somebody that will help me look after my well-being. From a consumer to having a in-depth view of what the people at SCC MHA do to help people, I am grateful. Large amounts of time and effort go into helping individuals with mental handicaps become better people. I have respect for the people at Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority because they have helped me in so many ways, from crisis and support to helping others and being part of a big team that betters lives. And the friendliness of a person helping another person is always there. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, did you catch the first speaker's name?
Richard Zimmer.
Richard? I personally want to thank Richard and Jesse for coming forward and sharing with us. Your efforts are very, very special, and we want to thank you for that, coming and sharing with us. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
And that is designating May 25th, 2017, as Theodore Redkey Day.
And I'll invite Annie Ransford forward. Friends, did I say it right? Oh, I'm sorry. Ransford. I, close enough? Okay. Thank you. I bless you. Bless you. Thank you very much, Annie. Once again, we'd like to acknowledge the Friends of Theodore Redkey Society, and we'd like to do it again this year with another proclamation. And it reads as follow: Whereas Theodore Redkey, a famous poet, was born May 25th, 1908, and died August 1st, 1963. And whereas Theodore's birthplace at 1805 Gresham Avenue in the city of Saginaw is maintained as a museum in his honor. And whereas Theodore attended the University of Michigan, earning a BA and a MA degree, and briefly attended law school before entering Harvard University. The Great Depression caused Theodore to leave school. Theodore then taught English at several universities including Lafayette College, Pennsylvania State University, and Bennington College. And whereas Theodore also taught at Michigan State University in East Lansing. During this period of time, he became a well-known poet and author. Whereas Theodore continued writing poetry and books, which resulted in receiving a Pulitzer Prize, two National Book Awards, and the Bolingdon Prize amongst many other honorable awards. And whereas Theodore's legacy remains strong in the city of Saginaw, his final resting place at his, and his remains are interned at Saginaw's Oakwood Cemetery. And whereas on April 1912, the United States Postal Service has dedicated a postage stamp in honor of Theodore Redkey, the Redkey Forever Stamp. And whereas Theodore once was quoted as saying, "A lively, understandable spirit once entertained you, it will come again. Be still and wait." As we proudly honor this magnificent individual, we know the wait is over as he is before us and will continue to entertain us through his poetries and writings. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby proclaim May 25th, 2017, as Theodore Redkey Day in the City of Saginaw, and call upon the citizens of this community to reflect on and honor the life of this brilliant individual. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 22nd day of May in the year of our Lord 2017. Signed, Dennis D. Browning. Mayor. Councilmembers Floyd Clock as Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and our city manager, Timothy Morales. Would you come and receive this?
I did. And I'm here to invite you to a birthday party. Theodore Redkey will be 109 on May 25th. Now, he's not able to make it, but I'm hoping you will. The support of our mayor and our leaders is important to us. Friends of Theodore Redkey have been nonprofit since 1999. And so we're, we're here, and we're into our 17th season of literary picnics. We're in our seventh season of Language Arts Camp where we work with Saginaw City students. Ezekiel Project, First Ward Community, we've worked with them, Kingdom Life Ministries. We started with seven kids. We have 70 now. And we have two sessions. And we teach them one-on-one as much as we can, or small group learning with their reading and writing skills. And then we move forward, teaching them about the poet and the museum and the 1920s era. Last year, DeMona Reed taught us all how to do the Charleston. So we have fun, and learning is fun. Our board, our trustees, is filled with a Dow executive, businessman, attorneys, teachers. Joy Seals, a former mayor, is on our board, and is very helpful, too. So please do come to the birthday party. That's important to us to have you there. We'd like to make it official and have the proclamation, an official presentation at the House as well if you're able to make it. Okay. Thank you so much for this honor.
Mayor, we are now at public hearings.
Okay. And our first public hearing, Madam Mayor.
Would you like to read them?
How about if I read the rules on a public hearing? So we all understand them. The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments and considerations when actions may be taken. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Begin by stating your name. The main presenter or designated representative will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five minutes. Speakers may ask general questions but shall not ask questions of individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience. And the public hearing is not a question-and-answer session. Now.
Our first public hearing is the City of Saginaw Proposed Budget and Property Tax Milage for Fiscal Year 2017-2018.
And is there anyone that would like to speak, reference the Proposed Budget and Property Tax Milage for Fiscal Year 2017 and 2018? Again, is there anyone that would like to speak about the Proposed Budget or Property Tax Milage for Fiscal Years 2017 and 18? And the third and final time, is there anyone to request to speak, reference the Proposed Budget and Property Tax Milage for Fiscal Year 2017 and 18? Being none, councilmembers, I'll entertain a motion for...
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay. Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion, councilmembers, at this time? Being none. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next public hearing is the Special Assessment District for Police and Fire Milage for Fiscal Year 2017-2018.
And is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council, reference the Special Assessment District for a Police and Fire Milage for Fiscal Year 2017 and 18? Again, a Special Assessment District for Police and Fire Milage for Fiscal Year 2017- 2018. And one last time, is there anyone in the public that would like to address the Special Assessment District for Police and Fire Milage for Fiscal Year 2017 and 18? Being none?
Move to close the public meeting.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion from councilmembers at this point? Being none. All in favor signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Our third and final meeting this eve, or public hearing this evening is Downtown Development Authority District Milage to be levied on properties within the district.
And I see we have a speaker on this public hearing. So, Mr. Miller, would you go right ahead?
I hate to break the streak. We were doing so well, and then I had to stand up. Good evening, Mayor Browning, Mayor Pro Tem Clock, councilmembers, manager Morales. I'm Tom Miller with Saginaw Future, and I'm here tonight actually representing the Saginaw Downtown Development Authority, or as it's better known, the DDA. And I'm here tonight to speak on our request to implement a two-mil levy in the DDA district. DDAs were designed to be a catalyst in the downtown of a community's downtown district. Public Act 197 of 1975 provides DDAs the authority with the approval of the municipal governing body to levy an ad valorem tax on real intangible property not exempt by law and is finally equalized in the downtown district. It goes on to say that the tax shall not be more than two mils if the downtown district is in a municipality having a population of less than 1 million individuals. The tax shall be paid to the treasurer of the authority and credited to the general fund of the authority for purposes of the authority. This would generate roughly $130,000 annually to help fund various activities in the DDA. This money can be used to help pay for things such as special events, security, security cameras, trash pickups, snow removal, flower plantings, matching facade grants, et cetera. The DDA can also use the funds to purchase strategic parcels for economic development projects, demolish blighted structures, own and operate parking lots, and many other development-related activities. This is an exciting time in riverfront Saginaw. The brand-new state-of-the-art SVRC Marketplace project is coming soon, including a year-round indoor farmer's market slated to open next year. Delta College has announced plans to construct a multimillion-dollar urban campus in downtown Saginaw. Shaheen Development has finished phases one and two of the riverfront brownstone condominiums and is well under construction for phase three. The Bancroft and Eddy Buildings were renovated to a total project investment of $7 million. The 150 apartments are nearly fully occupied. The Temple Theater, the Dow Vent Center, Saginaw Spirit, Huntington Bank Event Park, Saginaw Children's Zoo, Saginaw Children's Art and Historical Museums are all major attractions that bring thousands of visitors to the city of Saginaw each year. The riverfront is anchored by Covenant Healthcare and St. Mary's Hospital and the Central Michigan College of Medicine. These anchor institutions provide the basis for economic activity now and for many years to come. These critical funds will be helped to, will be used to help support economic efforts in the city of Saginaw. Over the past year, we have held many public meetings and presentations throughout the DDA district to inform property owners of our intentions. We have received only positive feedback, and we have asked for specific items of interest that they, the stakeholders, would like to see funded. If passed, we intend to fund the following activities in the year one. $10,000 for the installation of monitoring cameras in downtown Saginaw. $10,000 for a lighting program for public areas such as dimly lit parking lots and alleyways. $15,000 of overtime police patrols for the riverfront area, especially during events and on busy weekends between Labor Day and Memorial Day. We've committed $7,500 in the first year for wayfinding signage so that visitors can find their way around our riverfront. We've committed $7,500 for decorative trash receptacles, something that we heard a lot of a need for in the city of Saginaw. We've also allocated $25,000 for a matching grant for a facade program to improve the look of some of our buildings. $10,000 for marketing the city of Saginaw, and finally, $10,000 for a grant writer to help leverage our funds. I'd like to thank the DDA Board, the city manager, Yolanda Jones, Lori Brown, and I'd like to especially thank Lori because I've been saying that Lori should be at these city council meetings for about five years, and she's finally with us, joyfully seated in the back, for their assistance and leadership on this project. This has been, the DDA has been around for a long time and really needed some funds to be proactive, and this will give us the ability to do just that. I would also like to thank city council members for your support and your kind consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Tom, is there anyone else to speak, reference the Downtown Development Authority District Milage to be levied on properties within the district? And third and final time, is there anyone else that would like to speak about the Downtown Development Authority District Milage to be levied on properties within the district? And that would include Lori Brown if she would like to speak. We would, we would, okay. All right. What? Only twice that I've announced it. My colleagues are indicating that I just assumed Mr. Miller was number one. But third and final time. It was? Did I do it three times? Did I do it three times? That's the only one that I needed. That's the only one I need right there.
You got your clerk?
My clerk is... my clerk is satisfied, I'm satisfied. Because as I was announcing it, Mr. Miller come up. So, thank you very much. Council members, need a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
And supported, yeah. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, you are now at personal appearances.
Okay, and before we start personal appearances, once again, I'd like to remind you that as we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. As you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present and to the citizens watching on SGTV and to this council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. And with that, Madam Clerk, our...
Will be Brent Polarski.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city staff. I'm Brent Polarski, 52, 65, Two Mile Base City, 48706. I come before you today as the Business Manager for Labor's Local 1098, which resides in Saginaw, which represents roughly 1,400 members from Saginaw County all the way to the Mackinac Bridge, of which 90 of these members reside in the City of Saginaw. 216 of these members reside in the county of Saginaw. I come before you tonight to, A, to introduce myself to you all. Some of you may have known me. We are with the Labor's Construction Union. We do a all-of-the-above approach to construction. I will talk a little bit about what we represent and who we represent, but I want to first tell you about our training and apprenticeship first. We have three state-of-the-art training facilities, one in Iron Mountain, one in Lansing, one in Detroit. Our apprenticeship program is registered with the DOL. We are partnered with MYOSHA, and our trainers, of which we have 20 in the state, are all ANSI certified, which is the highest accreditation you can receive from an independent organization. We partner with community colleges so that when our individuals go through classroom time, get their certification and training, that they can come out with an associate's degree with a partnered college. We teach classes from asbestos, confined space, hazardous waste, infectious control, risk assessment, meaning lead, mold, and blood-borne pathogens. We do GPS, asphalt, blueprint training, concrete, form setting, hydroexcavation, OSHA classes from 10, 30, and 500, along with CPR training. With this training, we believe in safety. We believe our trade, along with the other organized trades, is the safest way to build, construct, and remodel. To that end, in a recent MLive article that ran in April of 2017... or 27th of 17, there was an article that 43 members or people in the state of Michigan passed away on job site accidents, of which of those 43, three of them were union members. Any injury, any accident, any death is one too many. But, the professor at MSU, Ken Rosen, who is the Chief Division Occupational Environmental Medicine, tracks workplace deaths. He says where there is a higher percentage of union workers, it correlates to a lower rate of injury and death. I bring that only because we train this, we promote this, it's in our culture. Finally, we believe in the community. We donate, over the last two years, $50,000 to the East Side Soup Kitchen Boys and Girls Club, and I know I'm very close, but I'll wrap up quickly. We're part of the community, from the Saginaw Land Terren Phil Festival. We have careers which have good-paying jobs starting at $15 and $25 an hour based on your skill sets and credentials. If you are aware of people in the community that are interested, please send them to our website. I have business cards that I will leave with the clerk. You can get with me at that point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, Justin Palmerville. I have been informed that he will not appear tonight. Therefore, we will move to Charles Primo. Do not see Charles. Let's try Debbie Melkonian.
Debbie Melkonian, 2116 Adams Boulevard. We have lost two neighborhood association presidents in the past six months. One was Ken Komtos from the St. Stevens Association, and today we buried Jan Cook from the Northwest Association. Three years ago, we lost Sister Lois from the Cathedral District... I'm sorry, from the Horton-Jones District. It is my belief that these past presidents want to see neighborhood associations continue and be revitalized, so their efforts and dreams to keep Saginaw alive will continue. Our strategic plan does outline community efforts, goals, and means, and I quote from page 11.6, "larger neighborhood associations for increased transparency." In order to do that and to accomplish that, we must involve council members and the city to engage in outreach for the community. I feel I have a few ideas as to possibly accomplish this. I know we use interns in our financial department, at our police station, but think about using interns to work in John Stempel's area and to help promote neighborhood associations. Students that are majoring in public administration, human services, leadership positions in public and private sectors, and communication in the media and administration are all potential people that could help revitalize our associations and get the word out, possibly more. In addition, we do send out a mailing to every citizen, homeowner, or rental landlord. Possibly put something in those envelopes that shows a map of the city and where those neighborhood associations are outlined on. That would give our residents or homeowners an idea where they can attend an association meeting if they're interested. The other idea is when landlords renew their rental licenses, put information about neighborhood associations in their hands, and identify the boundary of the association which their individual property falls into. These are ways to increase more input in neighborhood associations so residents can join some and help keep them strong and not let the current leaders become discouraged for lack of people coming out and being part of one. We need your help. We can't do it without you, and I urge that you get with the presidents of some of these associations and see how you can provide assistance. Thank you.
Speaker is Sharon Dinsey.
Excuse me, I have an issue with talking here. Hello, Mayor Browning, Mayor Protem Klock, manager Morales, and city council and staff. I just wanted to make you aware of a program that we recently inquired in our... in our city. It's Walk with a Doc program. This program was started by a cardiologist in Ohio. He got tired of looking at people across from him in the office and telling them they need to get out and walk. So he became frustrated, he went out and walked, and the patients followed. There is now hundreds and hundreds of chapters of Walk with a Doc all over America, and a few in some other countries. We are the most northern of the Walk with a Doc chapters here in Saginaw, so we're really proud to do that. And our launch walk is June 3rd from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Hoyt Park. And this is not a walk for those who are already in shape. I mean, they can certainly walk too, but this is for all ages. We don't care how slow you walk or how fast you walk, as long as you walk. The physician will be speaking on a... on a subject that's related to walking at the beginning, eight to 10 minutes, and then the physician will walk with you, so you have a chance of speaking. And if there's enough questions after the physician speaks, he will answer them there, which turns oftentimes into about a half an hour. So it's free to everyone. Everyone can come. Bring your kids, bring your moms, bring your dads, and bring your neighbors. So we need to be a healthier Saginaw, and this is Go High's way of starting it out. It'll be every other week either in Hoyt Park or Ojibwe Island. And a lot of times, we can be walking in Hoyt Park when there's baseball going on. It is on a Saturday. So thank you very much and hope to see some of you there.
If it rains, enjoy the walk.
All right, thank you.
And I live in 2216 Adams Boulevard in Saginaw. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Levante Carrington. Remarks of council.
And remind council members of a five-minute time limit on our remarks, and tonight we begin with councilwoman Brenda Moore.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our presenters. Our... I'm sorry, our community people who spoke. I'd like to thank... it's going out the door. I'd like to thank the unions for coming and supporting. Miss Debbie, as always, it's always nice to have you in. The doctors walk. I do plan on coming to it. I don't know how many times I'm gonna come, but I'm gonna try once. This week, and like every week, has been an exciting week for the city. The city has had stuff going on continuously, and I want to encourage us to continue to do what we're doing, because people are now talking about Saginaw everywhere. When I go to MML, that's all I do is talk about the City of Saginaw. And so we have people who have been coming in and out of Saginaw for the last two weeks just looking at the City of Saginaw. Maybe they may move here. Maybe we may get some more members, Debbie, in the community groups. The other thing is, I'd like to encourage all my fellow council people to take advantage of the MML's scholarship fund. I think that it would be worth your while to get involved. And with that, Mayor, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I first want to mention, for all our council members as well as the public, about our director of public works and facilities administrators, the gentlemen have prepared a memorandum about the condition of the cemeteries. I think it's really important for the public to be aware of the limitations the department has had in being able to maintain the cemeteries, particularly with the upcoming holiday. The weather has been brutal when it comes to trying to work in the cemetery. We don't have the staff that we used to or need to do the work, so in anticipation of those people who may go to the cemeteries and not find them pristine, please understand our departments, our staffs are doing everything they can, but it's limited to what they can do, so please be patient with the departments. Second, I do want to mention, we have 4th of July coming up for the Saginaw Area Fireworks as fundraising now. If people are interested in the fireworks, please make your contributions now to help them in their planning. It's going to cost about $110,000 to do that fireworks show. It brings in a nearly equivalent number of people into the ci... into the city. It's a huge boost for us, just publicity-wise, and we need to support them. They do a tremendous amount of work getting this... getting ready. The Parks Department does a good job with Ojibwe Island getting it ready. Let's support those volunteers who are in the Saginaw Area Fireworks and making this a wonderful event for Saginaw. And the last thing is, we have a... many of you know that I support our Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra. It's coming up with its last concert of the season on June 3rd at the Temple Theater at 8:00 p.m. They will have a violinist featured as a soloist that day. It'll be quite a special event, so if anyone is interested, her na... it's being sponsored by the Madeleine Capell Trust, and it features Mayuko Camio, a violinist, a very accomplished musician, and it should be a great concert, so I would encourage all of you, and particularly our council members, to support these events in our city. So if you can get a way to do so, or staff as well, I'd love to invite all of you to join me. I will be there, and I'm sure many others will be, but the more support our council members our staff can give, the more it is beneficial to the entire city. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for attending. I would like to thank all the speakers today. I'm just very appreciative about our diverse cast of community partners. We have our neighborhood associations. We have union representation from Bay City. Thank you so much for what you do for your community, and I'm deeply sorrowed about the recent passing of several of our past neighborhood presidents. Once some time has passed, maybe the city should consider doing some proclamations for some of those that did so much work for our city. I'd like to thank the city staff for the preparation of the budget. It's a lot easier to read compared to when I first became involved in the city council. It was pretty hard to follow the dollar. There was so much transfer from one department to another department to make ends meet least for that budget, but in this budget, and it becomes increasingly easier to read. I don't know if it's because of my tenure here on city council, but it's a lot easier than it has been in the past, and I just want to commend the city council for that. What's significant to me in the city... in the budget was that, excuse me, the city staff, was the Anderson Center. Very small part of the budget, but is a big part of the city. It's a staple of the city. Right now, it's, I guess, it's so much... I want to use the word struggle, but it's operating in the red, so we need to be good stewards and try to use Anderson... Anderson Center when possible, and take care of it when we do use it. We had an unfortunate incident, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago. We have to avoid that, because I would hate to see the Anderson... Anderson Center diminish role in the city. I would like to announce the First Ward is having a Daddy Daughter Ball Thursday, June 1st, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. at the Bancroft. If you... the tickets are $25 if you're interested. Glisha Tatum at First Ward, which I'm a board member of, she is able to provide you tickets. I believe Starz is having a community forum for proposed new bus routes for May 23rd. I know we had discussions here on city council about some of the routes and how some of the routes are not conducive to some of the roads in the city, and it somewhat hastens deterioration of the road, so I don't know if we have any representation at city council or city staff or just city membership at the... at the meeting, but since they're considering new bus routes, we should at least inform them that some of their current routes are not conducive to our roads from previous meetings that... that we have had. I think that's about it. I... one of my more favorite community functions is a mentorship program in which I take my lunch hour and read with some students at some elementary school in the city, and we're coming to a close. We're starting a new year, so if that's something you might be interested in doing, please email me or call me, and we could get you lined up, because I think just what our kids need is just a little attention from our adults here, and so they can see that there's other ways of making decisions than what they may be currently experiencing. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor? I have a couple of comments tonight. Wanted to start with joining Mr. Miller and welcoming Lori Brown to the city staff portion of the audience here. I kind of jumped the gun a couple weeks ago in congratulating you. I got ahead of the city manager on that welcome. One of the things we had tonight was our public hearing on the budget, and I'm going to hope that the absence of speakers on that means that the public is, in general, happy with the work of the city manager, his staff, and the council in preparing and preparing to pass this budget, that...
That I think things are working very smoothly in terms of not just the budget, but city staff. Since I've joined the city council, I have a heightened awareness of how things work in the city. And recently, as Saturday night into Sunday morning, there was a traffic accident near my house. As of today, the signs that were knocked over and that were already being replaced. And so, that's the kind of activity that I think things happen, they're responded to, and the regular daily business of the city works very well. I had one question here for the manager. I've also noticed the work has begun over on the DNR property they arranged to get from the racer trust, the old central foundry plant. And if the city has been read in on any of the planning for that, or how that work is going to proceed, I'd be interested to hear more about that. They're doing a lot of covering of old concrete. And I'd just like to know that any potential pollutants left on the site, if they're covering them to a standard we would agree with, if it's their project. So, any news we could get on that. We've had some people here from the neighborhood associations this evening. I wanted to mention specifically, I saw some of the current presidents and other people helping them, doing another cleanup over at the former DeJeserai House on South Washington. And keeping that in a good marketable state for our attempts to sell that property. And these were people not even from necessarily the neighborhood that that building is located in. So, the people that are mentioned as presidents and very involved in their neighborhood associations, they may live in one association, but they are concerned for the city as a whole and get out there and let that be known. We have the Light Up the City events coming, and I've been to some of those. And those presidents and other board members from one association, they go to all those. They get over the whole city. They're very interested in every neighborhood, not just theirs. Update on some of the commercial demolition that we were able to fund through some grant money coming back in. The old Timbertown waterproofing site has begun demolition. And they've already done the asbestos and mold cleanup over at the old Longfellow School that'll be coming down. So, that's just kind of progress on some of what the city's doing.
Good evening. It's not too often I would single somebody out to wish a happy birthday, certainly not from the council table. But I did notice today that our own Yoko Mazner celebrated a birthday. And for those of you that don't know who Yoko is, I don't believe that we would have a Japanese gardens and a tea house. We might not have the Saginaw-Tokushima Sister City Program without her. She has been an active leader in regard to one of our little hidden gems in the community. If you've not been to visit the Japanese gardens, you certainly should. That's right at the corner of Washington and Rust Boulevard. It's across the street from the Water Works. It is gorgeous. And I'd be remiss in not mentioning again that she received from the nation of Japan, their Order of the Rising Sun Silver Rays Award. This was conferred quite some time back. But when an entire country recognizes you for the work that you've done for community relations between two different nations, it's quite a remarkable event. So, happy birthday, Yoko. I won't use any more of my five minutes to sing to her, because you don't want to hear me sing. The other thing, I want to commend Richard and Jesse for standing before us today and talking about the challenges they have faced. It reminds me that we never know, as we deal with people on a day-to-day basis, the cross that they bear. And so, that it always is important that we keep in mind the old proverb or saying about walking a mile in somebody else's shoes. So often, we are so quick to judge someone without knowing their circumstances. Neighborhood associations, I think they are a backbone of our community. I think Mr. Stempel would talk about how much they have done in terms of helping the city fight blight. I know that Chief Ruth would talk about what they have done in terms of helping fight crime. Please, please, please. Find out if your neighborhood has an association and get involved. I believe that would be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank citizens who are coming out and speaking to us this evening and bringing their concerns and their positive news to the city of Saginaw. To the gentleman that's using the Mental Health Authority Services, the one guy, when he was talking, Mr. Zimmerman, has kind of brought a tear to mine, because I can relate to him. I, too, was in a tragic accident, and I'm the only survivor out of four people in the car. And it tore our family up. Eventually, my mother passed away six years after that, because she was dealing with some mental issues and stuff like, too. So, I really understand what the gentleman was talking about. You know, you never know, you know, what happens to somebody until they actually tell their story. And just knowing that, you know, this guy's still around, he's still dealing with his life, he's going to college, he had a business and all that stuff. You never know. We lost our mother, five kids at home, so I understand that, too. And our grandfather was in an accident, too. So, we lost a lot. So, I really understand that. You know, and thank God that we do have a Mental Health Authority here in the city of Saginaw. Well, people can get help if they have issues. She even said that they even deal with addiction problems and stuff in that nature, too. So, if anybody know anybody that's dealing with those addiction issues, maybe we should see if we can get them down there to get some help. Debbie Melcony and the rest of the people from the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association, we appreciate you so much. Every time you come and you speak, I'm gonna thank you for what you do for the city of Saginaw, because it's infectious. My neighborhood association is getting started now. We've been in operation for a little bit over a year and a half now. We're getting a little better at it. But some things are happening in that neighborhood association. We happen to stay in the neighborhood where BV, Buena Vista, Spalding is all in the same corner there in Saginaw. And recently, the neighbors went and cleaned up a house in BV and took all the trash and put it on the street on the corner. But it took us a week to get it away, but it did, they did get it away. So, the neighborhood association is a beautiful thing. And then, we even started a kids program for the kids, a lunch program in the summertime. So, that gets my wife out of the house and some of the other neighbors to help the kids out in that neighborhood. So, thank you very much for what you do for neighborhood associations. You know, Theodore Roki Park House, I mean, we had a guy that's on a national level, you know, who passed away here. And now, he came here and his bones are buried here. He's been all over the world and got all type of awards for poetry. And I think that we ought to try our best to attend that event. I'm gonna try my best to be there, too. The unions, I preach about union jobs all the time, because they're some of the best-paying jobs. Everybody can't go to school and be lawyers like the rest of the city council people up here. I know we got three, we got three over here we know that got degrees, and we got a couple of others that probably deserve them. But union-paying jobs are good-paying jobs. In addition to that, we build America. If you want to make sure that you got a good building built or a house built, try your best to get a union guy to do it. What the gentleman was saying about the record on people that unfortunately passed away that was not in union. We have 43 people in the state of Michigan, and only three union people that passed away because they preach health and safety all the time. The unions was put together so that we could have health and safety in our workplaces. And I'm really thankful to be a union member myself, because we do get union good health and healthy training. So, like the gentleman said, we noticed a lot of, they're looking for people to join the laborers' union, so they can get some of those good-paying jobs. So, we need to let the community know that there is some jobs available, and I'll be spreading that, those words, myself. Other than that, I don't think I have any other comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to thank everybody for joining us here tonight. And from the neighborhood associations, I just want to extend my condolences for the recent loss of Tom Hart, as well as Jan Cook. Those are gonna hit us pretty hard in the neighborhoods, because there's a lot of work that gets done behind the scenes from those people who are involved in the community. Tom, with the Saginaw West Lions Club and their efforts at Bliss Park, as well as with Jan Cook and the Butman Fishery and Neighborhood Association. So, just want to extend my condolences to them. And also, my appreciation to Saginaw Community Mental Health and the friends of Theodore Rothke. I had the opportunity to attend, actually to be a judge or assessor, I guess you could say, for the Saginaw High Senior Projects last week, and they were phenomenal. We had kids in our community that thought that you had to go all over this country, out of the state of Michigan and out of the world, really, for some of those jobs. But we were able to help bridge that gap and let them know that if you wanted to look for a job in automotive supply chain, this would be a great place to do that. You don't have to go to Atlanta to become an LPN or an RN. So, it was great to share and make some connection points with them, with people in our community, that they can get some mentorships for those jobs that they are looking for. They did a phenomenal job. I also had the opportunity to kick off Make a Difference Day at the Saginaw YMCA, and that took place on Thursday. And they had 150 youth from not only the city of Saginaw, but also Thomas Township, Saginaw Township. And they focused on areas in the riverfront. But it was absolutely a phenomenal day, and the energy of 150 kids, high school kids, you are not going to be able to top that. But it was absolutely great to see them and really just to talk to them for a few minutes about citizenship and what it means to be a good community member. And everybody has a part in our community. Beautification Day was Friday. Thank you so much to my colleagues who were able to make it, and the mayor as well. This was by far the biggest beautification day event that we have had in the city of Saginaw. And it was our 15th year, and we welcomed over 300 people. We're still tallying, but we raised over $3,000 in donations, and that was just something phenomenal to see. When you see hundreds of green shirts all over Ojibwe Island and throughout the riverfront, it's just absolutely amazing. So, I want to thank all of our friends and sponsors for that event. It was a really great day. And about 12 hours after that event got over, we headed over to Vets McKinney Park with Patrice Bullware to help work on some projects over there. So, the last 72 hours between Thursday and Saturday were absolutely great in the community, just so we can welcome. For those of us who live here, this is, you know, part of what we are supposed to do as councilpeople, as citizens of the city of Saginaw. But it was, yeah, it was just great. So, that's all I have.
And just a couple of comments to reference our Mental Health Month. Congratulations to the Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority. Our two speakers representing them were wonderful, and we certainly do that. Excited about that. Also, the work that Saginaw County Mental Health Authority has done with our law enforcement community has been tremendous, and we've seen some great successes with that. The Theodore Redkey Day is coming up, and they asked if somebody would be available. I see there's two events, and if somebody was available from 4:00 to 7:00. I'm thinking about doing the Bancroft Wine and Martini Bar from 7:00 to 10:00. So, I thought I'd put my name in first for that one, because we still know there's one from 4:00 to 7:00. I'm just kidding, I'll be, I'll try to stop by the 4:00 to 7:00 one there. But that is great, a well-known Pulitzer Prize winner right here in the city of Saginaw. And I think that's great that they have managed that house, and the legend in his readings were great. So, as we go down the list here, boy, I can't say enough about our labor unions and what they do for our community and the amount of training that they go through ahead of time. Just speaks for itself when it comes to injuries and some of the other stuff that happens that preventive. We will never know how many were prevented because of those trainings, because they just didn't happen. With that, neighborhood associations, obviously, every time I get a chance, and I've been asked by a lot of other cities, especially about our crime rate going down, and I have to start with neighborhood associations. And they just can't believe how many we have. They just, it just baffles them. You have how many neighborhood associations? And it just baffles other cities, even neighboring cities. And I would tell you right now, Bay City and Midland does not hold a torch to Saginaw, how many neighborhood associations there is. I mean, it's just tremendous. And when you get on the statewide, so, just so much for that. I guess I missed the fact that Tom Hart had passed away. I don't know how long ago that was, but, and Tom, Tom was one of my police explorers in the Saginaw Police Department. And Tom, we almost lost Tom at Artie Hill High School due to an accident in the pool. But Tom survived and became a very, very important person in our communities. We'll certainly mourn the loss of Jan Cook with our neighborhood associations. I personally will mourn, because Jan is an extension of my family. Jan, our family reunion, so, yeah. Jan is an extension of my family, so, my personal family. So, we will, I will personally miss Jan, not only on the neighborhood association, but also as extended family. And so, that was a real shock and a surprise, you know, to me with that. So, other than that, you didn't mention the Stars, and I'll do it now instead of Boards and Commissions. That is tomorrow, 6:00. It's at the Rosa M. Park Transit Operations Center. And I do serve on the Board of Directors over there, so council has a direct communication with them. And also, any of those routes that are, that may be recommended will be subject to review by the city of Saginaw. So, it's very important that we do, and they are very open to that. They want to hear from us as much as we want to hear from them and to make those work. So, it was on the news today, and I hope it continues tomorrow. I'll do one last little plug on that, on Ask the Mayor segment tomorrow on TV 5, to try to get people to come over, too. And if you have, if you use Stars for transportation to get there, this meeting is going to extend past the hours that Stars runs. You will be guaranteed a ride home. Stars will shuttle, and anyone who is there that needs transportation home will have transportation. So, that is not going to be an issue for this meeting. But we do want to hear from our citizens on the routes, the service and the times. And there is two public hearings. There'll be another one in the near future. We'll get you information on that, too, to try to keep you posted on that. So, with that, I believe that's the end of my remarks. So, Madam Clerk, I'm back to you.
We are at reports of manager.
Thank you. Just a few items this evening. And I first would like to thank the staff and also council for working on the budget. Thank council for all the extra committee, the whole meetings that we've had. Putting the budget together is a long process with a lot of moving parts. It starts with Yolanda and her staff, and also the down-to-division heads in all of our departments, and then the departments coordinating those budgets with the division heads. And I think we'll hopefully pass this tonight and then probably start working on the next one tomorrow. So, that's how long it seems it takes. But actually, we start in December for the next year. So, it's almost a year-long process that we work on that. So, we have to remember also that the budget is a living document. So, as things change throughout the year, we do move money in the budget. And we've talked about it before, but a lot of the things you see that are, particularly capital costs, are items that aren't budgeted for. So, we have to cut other things in the operating budget or forego other projects to do that. Another example is what's on the budget tonight for the ceiling of the building. That's directly related to the email I sent you some time ago with the damage that occurred in our Human Resources Office for water infiltration through the masonry. And, but that's just an example of these unknown projects or unknown deficiencies that we have in the building and our other buildings and streets and sidewalks, et cetera, that we don't, we haven't been planning for due to financial issues. So, I think this budget also takes that into account, and we're trying to address some of those issues through the budgeting process, so that we have funds to be available and be a little more proactive in caring for these buildings and equipment that we need. Also, I think we illustrate in this budget that we're attempting to address our unfunded liabilities to some degree. It's a huge number, we all know, but little by little, we can hopefully chip away or put some savings aside. So, when those numbers peak, we can address that without having to reduce staff and services as we- to reduce staff and services as we had to do in the past. So congratulations again to the department heads and Yolanda and her staff for putting together the budget. And Councilman Tibbs, I think, is a combination of things. It's probably you're much more experienced in reading the budget now, but I also did ask the Office of Management and Budget to kind of put the budget together a little bit differently this year with the infographics section, and I think that's a big help to anyone who reads it, particularly to the public. It makes it a lot easier to read and see where the tax dollars are going, so that was a big help as well. Since the last regular council meeting, we also had the Saginaw Police Department Annual Awards Ceremony. So again, congratulations to Officer Jordan Beatty, who's raised in the city of Saginaw, maybe not born here, but he's the Police Officer of the Year, and he won several awards at the ceremony, and I think just about every other one, he was coming up for that. So I think illustrates that his dedication to the job, and I would, if I recall, and there were a lot of the young officers that won awards, but we do have a lot, a lot younger department, and Chief would tell you, he's been hiring a lot of officers in the last few years, and I know you've all seen that with the swearing in. We did have additional new officers sworn in at that ceremony, four, and we had a promotion to sergeant, so a lot of changes at the police department. Congratulations to all the officers and command staff who won awards. We also had the Housing and Urban Development come in and review our HUD dollars in the past, I think that was last week. They were very impressed with the city staff and the way that we're allocating and managing those funds, so I'm going to congratulate Yolanda and Kane Franklin and that staff on that as well. We've had issues with that, and I think most of them have been corrected. The only things that they saw were some minor corrections, and we'll get those taken care of and move on. Also, I thank Dean Emerson at the SVRC. He gave the mayor, Mayor Protem, and I and Mr. Stumpel a tour of the Saginaw News Building. It's completely cleared out now, and it appears that they're progressing very well, and they have the goal of opening next spring. I think May is their ultimate goal, so from what we saw, I thought it looked very good, and they've spent a lot of money. It's not money that you see yet, but I think it's something they had to do, so I think that's going to be a great development. I also wanted to assure the rest of the council members that Councilman Humphries, Councilman Bryant, Councilman Brenda Moore, and the mayor have been working diligently on the mission statement. I had a meeting with some citizens last week to get input, moving that forward, and I also thank Debbie Powell and Vicki Davis for doing all of the administrative work related to that. So I think we'll be bringing something, I think we plan to bring that early July, late June, back to the rest of the council to view. The, just an administrative note to the citywide neighborhood meeting this Thursday at 5:30. The location has changed. It will be at the Saginaw Police Department. Make sure that's noted on your calendar if you plan to attend. And a couple noted that Lori Brown, our new finance director, this is her first council meeting, so if you want to take a chance to congratulate her and say hi, she'll, she's here tonight, and she can be here for a few minutes after the meeting. Maybe next time. So also regarding the DNR question that Councilman Milne had, Tom Miller from Saginaw Future has been kept in the loop on that project, so they're still working on the DNR, setting that up. Right now, Racer Trust is doing work on that site, and they are capping the foundation. So anything that they do has to be approved by the EPA and the DEQ, so they're working closely with those organizations. If the DNR does take over the site, they're aware of the plans for it. The city isn't necessarily involved in the management of that any longer, but Tom will be kept in the loop on those, so as we get new information, I can forward that along. But again, EPA and DEQ will be involved every step of the way, because they're aware of the condition of that site, and they'll be making recommendations on how to proceed. Finally, a final item, and I know the mayor, Protem, is aware of it, so we'll, I wanted to just let council know, and you can direct how to proceed, but the county has a parks millage, and they have set aside some funds to spend in the city. Been contacted by the county controller so that we can communicate our desire to the county on what we'd like to spend those funds on. Phil Carwatt has been working directly with county parks for a while, and I have been to some meetings with them. I think it fits with the council's discussion during our strategic planning session to dedicate those dollars to our central parks area, which would be Ojibwe Island and Celebration Park, the splash pad, and that's what we've been working on, particularly the upgrades to Ojibwe Island. There are a few ways that we could handle this. You could pass a formal resolution that we prepare for you and bring to the next meeting. You could just pass support for that particular project and direct me to write a letter, so I'll leave it up to you how you'd like to handle it, but we'd like to get that to the county within the next few weeks so that the county controller can have that for their board and for the parks, parks board as well. With that, that concludes the management update.
And let's start with Councilman Michael Ball.
Mr. Morales, about the parks money, is this a one-time thing, or are they going to have it where some of that money is that citizens of the city of Saginaw pay for parks go directly to the parks inside the city? Is it going to be an annual thing, or?
It appears that it will be an annual, an annual allocation. I don't know that we know the exact amount at this time, but what Mr. Carwatt has been looking at doing with the county is having a memorandum of understanding on what those dollars could be directed to. He has been to park commission meetings, and they, I think, are very receptive to applying the dollars towards, particularly towards matching grant dollars or expanding projects that we currently have grants for. That's why the Ojibwe Island project is a good project, because we currently have a pretty significant DNR grant for the project, and also we have plans for spending more money that were in excess of the grant, but I think at this point, it looks like it would be an annual allocation.
Is any of the dollars going into Civitan Center? Because that's how this all started, the Civitan Center. When we first started talking to Mike Hanley and the county commissioners, we talked about, that's why we asked the city of Saginaw School District to give us Civitan Center. And then we said then that, well, we don't know how we're going to staff it, so I'm just, I'm just curious, because I keep hearing the same parks, and so I'm just asking, is Civitan Center involved in that at all?
At this point, Civitan Center is one of the council members mentioned, I think it was Councilman Milne. We can't use that until the school is demolished anyway, which is the reason behind my asking for that school. Civitan always belonged to the city. We could not use that because the school was attached to it and had a significant issue with mold. So I wanted the school to either tear down their building or give it to us so that we could tear it down so it could be used. It's still up right now, but we do have some grant dollars identified for that. So at this point, I think you could see some development with the Civitan in the next year or so, but at this point, these dollars would not be directed to that. It may be good later to, if you could talk to Phil Carwatt, he's the one who's been attending the meetings, but there's been some direction from the Parks Commission, who does control the dollars, on how they would like to see them allocated. So we did have some other projects initially that we thought about doing. They weren't necessarily in agreement with those projects, but I think the ones that we're talking about for the center park system is something that they could work with. It's important to note, too, that the county does control these funds, and they do not have to allocate them to us. It's a county millage, and they can spend them how they want, so we're thankful that they're going to allocate them to us, but we do have to work with them, and we have been doing that. Phil's probably been working on this for two years, I think, on this project, on how to allocate the dollars, and it can be frustrating, but he has brought several projects that they necessarily haven't been in favor of, but I think this is one that they can support. And then if it's, is the millage five years? So maybe a future years could be allocated to other parks or other projects.
Any other questions for the manager? Go ahead.
I'll just put it like this, is that, I mean, I guess they do have the ability not to allocate it, but I don't think that's the right, I don't know if that's the right way to phrase it. I mean, the city residents voted for it. The county and their leadership asked the city to vote for it, basically on a, I don't know if it was outspoken or promised, but at least the picture or belief that there was going to be some park development in the city. And so I guess I do agree with Mr. Balls as well as Ms. Moore, sorry, about Wick's Park as well as, you know, possibly the Civitan. So I mean, I guess I would like to see some options and some attention as to some of those projects as well. I mean, I understand that you want to allocate the funds to get the most bang for your buck, but I think some residents did vote for it under the belief that some of these neighborhood parks were going to get some attention. And just a comment.
Any other comments for the manager? Being none, thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, we are now at the consent agenda.
Available on, at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. A need to motion to approve the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Councilman Milne?
Eight and 13.
Eight and 13. Councilman Milne? Any others? Any others? Number eight and number 13. Any others? Any others? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
First exception, item number eight. Approve the payment to AT&amp;T for $11,371 for damages to a telecommunications cable by the city's maintenance and service division while excavating a water main valve.
Good evening, Mr. Carwatt. On item number eight, in the council communication about it, it mentions that we, as is standard practice, contacted Ms. Dig for the marking of utilities. In my personal experience, if you contact Ms. Dig and say, "We plan to dig a hole here," they mark a radius of utilities, and in fact, the city marks its own. Some of the other utilities use contractors to mark. So my question relates to, were the utilities accurately marked? Did we make an error, or were there errors in marking of utilities within our radius of excavation? And have we sought recovery at all for any mismarking?
Yeah. This instance, it was marked. It was within the area of when it was marked, but they hand dug down to locate it. They get, what happens is you're supposed to hand dig down, find the utility before you dig. They did that. They dug a foot or two lower than where they had originally anticipated to dig, but when they started to dig with the backhoe, they didn't literally expose the cable, but the pressure from the backhoe on the clay and the earth crushed it. So yeah, and in this instance, it was marked. It was our fault. If it wasn't, we wouldn't. We have, we have instances throughout the year where they don't mark them, we hit them, or, you know, we don't try to, but if we do, then it's not, there's no fees assessed. There's no, I mean, we would then have the ability to potentially go back onto them for any downtime that we may have, but I'm bringing this forward to you because it was marked, and it wasn't an error by our workers.
Okay. Come on. Did you want to make a comment? Go ahead.
He asked the question.
Okay. Councilman Milne?
Item eight. And it's been moved and supported.
Any further discussion? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13. Approve a purchase order to advance rehabilitation technologies for $16,500 for the relining of one 10,000-gallon sodium hypochlorite tank at the salt fraser retention and treatment.
Hi, good evening. Two questions on this item. I assume as part of looking into repairing this tank, we also considered whether replacement was a proper option.
Yes, we do.
I'd be interested to hear a price comparison between those two options. And secondly, we have seven of these retention basins, some of them of similar design. Is this a problem we now are going to be monitoring, trying to get ahead of any leaks? Is this a, something that will be coming back to us perhaps on other basins?
Yes, to the second question. All of the tanks are double-walled, meaning that there's a tank inside of another tank, and the interstitial space between the tanks, we're required to have leak detection monitoring in them, so we'd know right away if there was a leak, and we're also required to have our system tested annually, so we keep track of that, and then we have to provide that to our insurance carriers. So yes, we will be monitoring that. We're monitoring it all the time already, and we do know because of the similar age of these tanks when they were installed, that this is an item that we should be budgeting for in the future to take, address this problem. And then on the first question, we looked at replacement, and the tank alone, for something like this, 10,000 gallons, would be about $40,000 for the tank, and then you got to pay for all the excavation, getting rid of the old tank, and then if you do any damage to any of those systems, then you got to replace that monitoring system that's required, and then like sample wells that are required around the tanks as well. And we've already done some lining at a tank at the wastewater treatment plant several years ago, and it's held up very well. So we've been able to extend the life, and so we felt it would be best to just go ahead and reline the tank at this time.
The only questions I had? Move to approve item 13 on the consent agenda.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, your next order of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Council members, any reports from any of your boards or commissions that you're on? Councilman Humphrey?
I just want to, on the vision and mission meeting that we had, invited to attend from a long list of individuals, were those that may have opened a business or moved into the city and opened a business relatively recently, and it was very refreshing to hear the comments of the individuals in attendance, how supportive they are. they are of the city, the positive experiences that they've been having. So many of them are located in Old Town, but not exclusively there. It was just a kind of a nice compliment to the whole process. I'm glad we're doing it. I too appreciate the staff effort that went into pulling it off and I look forward to seeing what we ultimately achieve with it.
Yes. This Wednesday, the 24th, there will be an extra meeting of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And I don't want to get ahead of what we'll be doing there, but it will be a very exciting announcement if we approve the presentation we're going to receive Wednesday. So I will make sure others get to do that. 4:00 PM here in the council chambers.
On the 24th, the...I just want to confirm, the non-owner occupied property, the subcommittee meeting at 9:00 AM here at City Hall.
I'm trying not to move, but I'll...
Okay. Madam Cork, we have...
We have one important one tonight. It's...we need approval for the mayoral appointment of Michael Keenan to the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission with a term to expire June 30th of 2020.
Need a motion to approve.
We need support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Our next order of business is resolutions. Our first one is approving the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget.
Need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Mill?
I had a couple of things I just wanted to mention on the budget generally. City council and city staff are pretty generally aware of this, but I wanted to make a comment for the public that in the budget we have for the city, for every city employee we have, and we have about 390, we have about the equivalent of another employee in our legacy costs. This is pensions, healthcare benefits for retirees, promises we've made in the past when circumstances were different in the city of Saginaw. And we've done, I think the city staff long before I got here, a very good job of stabilizing where we are and getting a lot done with the resources we have. But this is an area that if the public, when it gets the opportunity to speak with their state legislators and possibly even their federal representatives, things change over a span of 20 to 30 years. Promises that were made when circumstances were different are not going to end up just being the responsibility of the city of Saginaw. We've had changes to our shared funding from state sources, from federal sources. Just to give you an idea of how unbalanced it is, on average, for a dollar we spend for pension costs for current employees, we spend $9 for pension costs for employees who are no longer working for the city. And that is not a situation that anyone envisioned at any point in the past 40 years. So this will be an area that the city can use help from any quarter and that will mean citizen involvement. This isn't something where just nine city council members plus the manager talking to our legislators will bring about change. It's going to require some work for everyone. So this is just something to think about when you see one city worker on the street. Imagine everyone has a ghost employee right next to them.
Actually, this is a good time to mention to the public that again, we are faced with a reduction in our general fund budget revenue. And one of the culprits remains what it has for 40 years and that is the tax cap. People tend to forget that, but council can't because...nor can staff because it affects everything we do. I mentioned earlier the problem with the cemeteries division being able to keep up. That's not the only division, however, that can't keep up, that can't do all the services that the public would like or that we used to be able to perform. This budget is balanced, but it's balanced only because of the reality that we have to cut things in order to make it balance as in great part result of that tax cap. So you as a public, I'm addressing everybody out there, if you wish to see services reinstated or not be reduced further in future years, everyone needs to recognize that tax cap is a huge culprit and until it goes away, we are going to be faced continuously with reductions in the general fund. So it's a reality. The public gets what they're willing to pay for. And if you aren't willing to pay for it, you won't get it. And the city, right now, City Hall is suffering from those factors because we have so much needs in the building. Our Public Works Building needs tremendous repairs and rehabilitation. Our fire department buildings do. The police department does. Our streets are hurting because we don't have the funds. Public...the trees in our city, this used to be known as the city of trees. Now it's...would be hard for us to be called that because of the harm that we've...the lack of maintenance we've been able to...has occurred in the last 40 years. And those are just some of the samples. It's not only, of course, the tax cap. I think everyone in council, everyone in the staff knows that, but it is a significant portion of the problem. If you wish more services, you've got to do something to help us. So far, the public has not been willing to do that. Our neighborhood associations are aware of it and they're doing what they can. I would urge the neighborhood associations to take it upon themselves to begin a campaign to overcome the tax cap. It needs to be repealed. Most people won't suffer a tax increase as a result of it. People seem to think that that's the automatic result. It's not true automatically. Some people will, but it'll be very minimal. The majority of people won't. Just the natural way the tax cap works, it's a cash reduction. I cannot emphasize enough, if you wish services, you have to be willing to pay for them. So we are facing a reduced budget again this year for that reason, among others, but for that reason as well. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Any other discussion on the motion? Being none. All in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next resolution is approving the amount for the fiscal year 2017-2018 public safety millage.
Motion to adopt?
Move.
Is there any further discussion? Being none. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Our final resolution is approving the request of the Downtown Development Authority to levy a two-mill tax on all real intangible personal property not exempt by law and as finally equalized in the Downtown Development District for fiscal year 2018.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Mill?
Is Mr. Miller available for a question?
Is there?
I recently read an article talking about some funding possibilities they're using in Flint where locally raised money is able to be leveraged because it is a matching fund for other grants. Will the money raised in this millage be able to be used that way? Does the Downtown Development Authority have the ability to pledge a matching portion for other grant opportunities?
Sure, sure. And that's why we specifically wrote in their $10,000 allocation for a grant writer because we know that there are...for instance, you know, we've talked about Wicks Park Drive and some of that area, potentially writing some grants to levy what we are putting in to, say, the DNR or to local foundations. Sure.
Okay. Well, great. That was what my hope was.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Being none. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, you are now at motions and miscellaneous business.
Is there any miscellaneous business to come before the council...Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Senator. Because of the time constraints that our manager suggested occur or exist with regard to the funds that the County Park is offering to allocate to the city, I would move that we ask that the funds available be...from the County Parks Committee be allocated for 2017 to the Central Parks area as recommended by the city manager, which is consistent with the council's direction at the January annual retreat.
The motion has a...that is a motion? That is a motion? Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? That's just this one time. Any discussion on the motion?
I don't remember saying that if we got money, it was only going to go. I do remember saying that we were getting the grant. You know, I guess my concern is, is that last year and year before, I'm sorry, last year and year before, we talked about Civitan centers. We talked about it. And not just Civitan, we talked about Wicks Park. So I mean, is this a one-shot deal? Is this something that you're going to go back and ask them?
The fact that we will continue to get money for projects annually. Regarding the Civitan, we're working with an individual to open a youth center there. So there will be work done there. It's just not something that we can announce yet. The development agreement is not done, but that's what we're...working on a couple of different locations for new youth activities. And one of them is a Civitan and another one is the former Junior Achievement Building that's at...by Crayola Park. Both of those items are not completed yet. When we get closer to that, those being completed, we'll bring those agreements to council, but then at that time, you'll hear about some future plans for youth-oriented after-school type activities at both of those. So I wouldn't...at this point, I'm encouraged by those activities to redevelop those two locations. I'd expect we'll probably be bringing those to council before the fall. So you'll hear more about that at that time regarding the future funds. I think that's kind of what our aim is, is to develop an agreement with the county whereby funds come back to the city for use in the park system each year of this millage. But I would also go back to the parks usage and we did...I think that a lot of people, you know, did think about money coming back into the city for parks, but I would also mention that I don't think any other local unit is getting this type of attention. Phil would know. And the city isn't the largest contributor of collection into this, but we're...we are getting an extra benefit from it in cooperation with the county parks. And they do have some ideas, too, that stuff that they would like to do with parks in the city, so they might do some of those projects on their own as well. So I think we'll continue to work with them to develop these ideas. At this point, I think we're talking about the current allocation.
And we'll go down to Councilman...I'm sorry, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I have...
Let me sit. Have you...are you all set? I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead.
I very specifically did limit it to 2017 on my motion because I recognize that in future years, there may need to be some different allocations requested. One of my concerns is I was approached by one of the council...one of the county commissioners who was on the committee from the county and they were...this was several weeks ago. They're anxious to have something from the city asking a specific allocation so they can know where to...what to do, where to go forward in making this allocation. And that's why I think it's appropriate, given the concerns with other applications, other things happening at the Civitan. And by the way, I do agree that the Civitan needs attention as does Wicks Park, but I think in the future, we will be able to address both of those. If we...got to remember, there is a potential for Wicks Park having some other things done from another...other sources. So at this point, since the council at our annual retreat wanted to focus on the Central Parks for this year at least, that's where my motion's coming from.
The county and the city working together on something, I think it's also important. We just mentioned earlier how the Jibway Island area and the Central Parks area draws in people from the whole county, in fact, the whole state for things like fireworks. So the immediate feeling from the county would be it benefits the city, but it also benefits the whole county on those projects. And I wanted to echo Mayor Protem Clock. Part of what I just mentioned is maybe a nice announcement out of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority relates to other work that may impact the Wicks Park area. So there's things that cannot yet be announced at this meeting that this would fit well with.
I was going to ask, I guess I missed as far as the deadline. You had...
If I may respond, it wasn't that there was a deadline, it's that they need...they are hoping to give... Decision soon on it, so they're asking for input as soon as possible.
Well, I guess I'm just concerned the precedent this might set because we don't necessarily know the dollar amount. We don't know the process of it. I guess I would rather see some type of council communication as far as defining what Central Parks is, how much we're talking.
We do know the dollar amount and we have Protem accounting for the political...
Current project that we are doing on the Jibway Island, so...
My understanding is working with Brian Leck, the city's county president, that we're going to have to...
Times. But the county has designated in each of their fiscal year from October 1st to September 30th, $80,000. And we are now in the second year of that commitment by them. The first year, as Tim said, we've had several plans that we prepared and presented in front of them, which was more so related to maintenance of our existing...I think you're all familiar with Potoff Park and our existing trail system along the east side of the river hasn't had any maintenance on it probably since the day it was built. And we have over $400,000 in needs just to maintain that existing trail system in order to keep it open. So we went in front of them with a plan to see if they'd participate in helping to just do some maintenance costs and they didn't like that. And as the city manager stated, they were more so getting a bigger bang for the buck to maybe use it as match dollars towards DNR trust fund grant. So our most recent request, as you're all aware, that we have been awarded, that hasn't come in front of council yet, but we applied for a $350,000 project on Ojibway Island. $245,000 of it is DNR trust fund money. $105,000 either has to be city match or some other type of match. So we did, in the budget you have, put in monies to match that just in case we weren't...we aren't able to get any other funds to do that. But we put a request into the...I'm working with Brian Leck and he brought that to their board in May. In May, he's going to bring it again in June to request, can we use $105,000 of that money to go towards the match of that DNR...or that Jibway Island project? So that's yet to be determined, so...but of the $80,000 in what would be their fiscal year 16 that ended September 30th, apparently there's about $60,000 remaining in there. They used about $20,000 for...Brian Leck has been working with Larry Brethour and doing some different recreational activities inside of the city of Saginaw. He hired staff to do some programming and to bring some programs into the city. So there's about $60,000 left. My understanding from 16, that had to then be...it's re-appropriated now in the county's budget as fund balance. So the only one that can approve that to come back to the city is the...not the Parks Commission anymore, but the County Board of Commissioners because it's sitting over there as fund balance. But the $80,000 that is in there for this current fiscal year, which expires September 30th, could be appropriated to the city by the Parks Commission. So right now, I think we're talking about $140,000 total, but every year that we don't do any projects within the city, you know, potentially that may or may not, if the board...county board approves, it could keep adding to that fund balance. So it's just... So it's just difficult. I mean, it's, you're sitting in front of a Parks Commission, it's, almost each of them individuals have their own private little thing they want to do. I can see everybody sitting here has kind of got theirs. So I'm just feeling that money's going to continue to sit there until we can get a memorandum of understanding to designate them funds towards something that we already have ready to move. So that's kind of where the money's at. It's about 80,000 a year, there's 60,000 left in '16, there was another 80 re-appropriated. So right now, you're looking at about 140, and October 1st, there'll be another 80 added to that, potentially.
The process that they want to allocate those funds is through their budget process, I believe.
I mean, they could set that aside. I guess I would rather see some type of council communication to see what the long-term plan is. I mean, we're asking to pretty much promise $80,000 without nothing on paper, and I guess I'm just a little concerned about that. So I guess if I had to vote for it now, I would say no. I mean, I'd rather see some type of council communication.
I'm not sure what your confusion is because... What we're asking for is a communication just stating the money that Phil mentioned, the 105,000 that we have in our budget, be allocated from those funds. That's, that's the plan for that money. That's what we, that's what we're asking to communicate to their board, is that those dollars we would like to spend on this current park project, which would allow Phil to do other projects with the 105,000. Those dollars allocated in our budget are streets, I believe, non-motorized trails. So potentially, Phil could use those dollars, then transfer over to the Loop or Wick's Park Trail, something like that. It's going to free up money of ours. Otherwise, as Phil mentioned, that money could sit there, and they can allocate it to us, or they could do their own projects. They have, there, there has been interest for the county to do their own projects in the city too, as Phil can mention from those meetings he's been to, recreational activities. So they would still be spending money in the city, it just wouldn't be allocated to a project that we are currently working on.
Communication, it was headstones for home runs, where that, that was, you know, the city no longer has a Parks and Recreational Department, Division, Staff. I mean, we do the best we can with what we have, but 17, 18 years ago, when the general fund was hurt, and that was a, and a whole division of our department that was just cut. So, you know, we try to do the best we can with what we have. So there's no abilities for, there's no staff within the city to provide recreational opportunities or even programming like similar communities have. So the 20,000 that Tim's mentioning, Brian Leck hired a part-time person through the summer to actually put on programs within the city, within the city parks. There's several other, and I could have him put something together that I could get to. I think we actually brought that at one point, I can't remember with it. I remember we did present something. I think Brian even spoke at one of the previous council meetings where he said, this is what we're doing, you know, within the city, so.
You know, he's talked to Phil and I before, we do think about, you know, voting for the millage and money coming back to the city, but the county did do an audit, and a very high percentage usage of county parks are city residents as well. I think it, I can't recall, Phil, if you do, if it was even 40 or 50 percent.
This week again, and so we'll keep on going. Go ahead.
I understand, you know, that we all would like to have some of those money go to certain parks. You know, I would vote that we go ahead on and take care of that project and get it done so we can get Wick's Park done, but I would definitely like to see us do something with the civitan next year allocation of funds that we get from the county. And I would like to throw another caveat in there that, could you please find out what's going on at Morley, that building there, whether it's a bathroom or electrical facility building there? But the roof is caved in. Utilities building, I think it is, out there by the, the basketball ramps. Can you please take a look at that and give us a rough idea what it would cost to get it fixed? Huh? Oh, that's school property? Okay, we'll take care of that. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I understand, and so I would vote for it with the, with what I know now, that we are looking at doing, something with civitan. That was my whole big beef, because when all of this started, civitan was on top of the list. And I understand we're going to do Wick's Park, I mean, Ojibwe, and everybody's going to enjoy it, you know, but everybody can't always get there. So I guess that's why I'm looking at a neighborhood for surrounding people. So, I mean, I would go with it. I would go with it. Yes, I would.
The process, it's just that, it just seems that it's in, done in haste. Because if I just remember correctly, I just saw a subcommittee, I'm sorry, excuse me, I saw minutes from the school liaison board, where there's county representatives, city council representatives, and school board representatives, where we were, I guess, somewhat concerned that we were not getting our fair share of millage. I believe that was April, maybe March, where I read those minutes. So it just seems that all of a sudden, there's this haste without any information before us, and it, I don't think it's, to be honest, I don't think it's the city's fault or this, this board's fault, but I guess my concern was the process. I guess I'd rather the residents know that we're making informed decisions, and we're just not talking about generalities, which, which I'm hearing now, I'm just hearing generalities and estimates. So, you know, I'm sorry. So that's my concern. So hopefully, before this millage will close out, and the county's asking for our residents to vote for another millage, that we have some type of process where we're making informed decisions. Because I'm just, I'm just hearing a lot of generalities and estimates.
County's budget, if we could get access to their budget, if it's set aside as, truly designated as city funds, or, or, I don't, I don't know the numbers as far as the percentage of their overall millage that actually comes from the city or what them dollar amounts equate to, but I think it's pretty close to that 80,000 from what I was told anyway. But, yeah, I'm not part of that whole process. I wasn't part of that millage process. I wasn't part of them initial discussion, so I, I really can't even speak to that, so.
If we can get a commitment out of what we do here tonight from the county to send those funds our way, that is what we want to do, because they have the same unfunded liabilities problem we do. They, so, but once something is back as a fund balance, they can do the same thing we can do here and reallocate funds. And they've had parks employees for years, so some of their unfunded liabilities are park employee liabilities. So anything that moves those funds our direction quicker, I think is better.
No one hit the nail on the head. What the county giveth, the county can taketh away. And what they are saying is we have allocated these funds during this year, and what we are saying back to the county is that we have a clearly identified project with a proposed budget, which has received a review and approval by the DNR and, and award of $245,000. I think we would be remiss to talk this thing over and over until the county decided to taketh away. And so I would very much support the motion that Mayor Protem Klock made, because it's the proverbial use it or lose it. I agree with Councilman Tibbs. If it looks like this is something the county will be committing themselves to in the future, it would be nice to have a plan moving forward and to work with them on what, because it sounds like they want to know what it is we'd like to do with the money. This isn't just a gift of here, use it however you want to, want to apply it. So I think we need to, to work in the future with them on good, solid plans and proposals.
So this is not something that we should be in a begging position for. This is something that we voted for, and we should get our fair share.
Countywide voters voted for it, and I don't, residents in the city did too, but they're not allocating funds to other location. I mean, this is, this is a good thing for us. This is a good thing that they're allocating dollars from a countywide millage to spend on city parks.
First time, we're not setting a precedent. This is a project, it's a one-time project that we have matching funds from. And I think we have to be very careful to go back to them and, because I, I can tell you right now, there's county commissioners who are not in favor of this. And I, we risk losing an opportunity. We need to have the door open and get that flowing, and then we start to expand, and because we have a lot of projects, and civitan would be on top of one of those. So I think this is a good beginning for that. So with that, is there any further discussion? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Any other business before the council? As long as unanimous, I'll go. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and supported. It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none? All in favor? Those opposed?